That would be, um, just general here. He didn't have all the stuff last time. So, and this has to also be adjourned for the busy day.
Yeah, this has got to have a public hearing on this.
Well, he has all the details. There's his paper in there that says what's needed.
Yeah, this is it. Guideline to fill our application for hearing for zoning board of appeals.
No, because there's no, we're required. But you have all, you're the only one who has all the stuff, I think.
Okay. It appears everything's in order. Elevations.
Um, we do have a thunder I was saying.
Is this it?
Yep. But does it show all of the... Everything else sits in the instructions.
Yeah.
And does the application say what?
Should Kathy go through this?
Kathy went through it a little bit first and then it came to us. Let's see if we can pass special plan or site plan. No, it's not completely filled out.
Special permit.
Or site plan. And I guess we have to sign up... We have to sign off on these.
We've never done this before.
I know, I haven't seen that before.
The application has been reviewed and is adequate for submission. No, we don't sign off. Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals action at date. This is what we would sign off on if we approved it, once we have the hearing.
Okay, but this says reviewed and is adequate for submission, it doesn't say what?
Submission to the building department.
Oh.
That's the way I read it.
And this is application for a hearing?
Yep. I tell Kathy to get it, he's got the butters list. Just, we'll kick this back to Kathy, have her... Have her fill out the information, the butters list, and schedule a joint hearing between zoning and planning.
Yeah, it was supposed to be the first day.
Yeah.
Yep. It looks like, it looks like all of the documentation is there.
Are you the gentleman that came in multiple weeks ago regarding a large structure on Route 202?
No, I'm on Kendall Street.
You're on Kendall Street, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this one's totally different.
Whereabouts on Kendall?
185, next to Tugby. I'm in the woods all the time, I can't see my house.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think airplanes can see it.
Yeah.
My driver, they can see it.
Yeah.
So we'll kick this back to the town clerk to go ahead and get this scheduled up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that rest of that package is the public hearing case, all of the, all of the documents that are ours to keep, that's all filed.
Correct, okay. Did you find any more?
Yep.
You're good.
Actually, if Will would like, I'll give this one to her. We found that first one, curb cuts. In the next page 13, we've got a website with Munson, Mass. And then, what is zoning all property in Munson?
Do a circular check, can we?
Yep. I've...
Oh, you're good, can't miss that.
No, that's why...
So who, so who does this get kicked back to?
Well, changes have to be made with the new zoning laws.
Yep.
Somebody will make all the corrections at once, correct.
Do you want Bill to review it? Oh, Bill?
Okay.
And then, um, you want me to send the document, the word document to you?
Yep.
Okay.
We do have it, we, we have a...
We have this.
We have this electronically.
Yes, I have it in Catherine Leonard's. We got it from Dickie.
So some of those... Well, it doesn't matter, you're going to re, Bill's going to review it?
Bill will review it, yeah. You, Bill, you're going to review for changes that need to be made in...
Based on the zoning amendments?
Yep.
Yeah, but don't, I wouldn't do anything until we hear back from, from, uh, Boston.
Right, just kind of note what needs to be changed, and there are indicated there are...
I can do a markup version and then you can accept or reject what you know for sure.
And take out the Munson references and...
Where's the, where's Munson?
Page 11 and 13. One on, one on page 11 under curb cut.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got that one.
Two on page 13, I can't remember which.
Here you go.
Okay. Okay.
That was the quick look.
There may be more, that's just quickly what...
Okay. Yep, so you'll send me the, the word document?
I'll send you the word document, yes.
Yeah, Munson.
Another one on, uh, what is the difference between zoning bylaws and building code for town in Munson?
Missed that.
Where is that?
Page 13. Second, uh, from the bottom. Building commission is also the zoning enforcement, also the town in Munson.
Yep.
But I'll, I'll read it in, Michelle.
Yeah, it also says, uh, on the bottom there, see page nine of this guide. Contact building commissioner or town planner. Should be planning board.
Right.
Unless they, unless that changes here in the future. You're just going to go through and redline it?
Uh, yeah, I'll mark it up.
Okay.
Do you have areas served by, uh, water, by the South Henry Water District? You do.
On page seven?
Yes.
Contact South Henry Water District 1 and 2, yeah.
You do have some areas that are...
Actually, I guess in the whole document, if you did a search for Munson...
Right.
That would help, but there's other, but there's other titles too, like contact the planner.
Yep.
We don't have a planner. This is going to be a guide to, to help navigate through the process, it'd be good if it was that.
Would it?
I've been calling a planner for a month.
Could you sign in, please?
I'm here to sign in.
Oh. Oh. Model of efficiency.
Well, it wasn't a true sign in, though.
Yeah.
Alex had to go set up finance committee, he's also recording tonight.
Police department. Safety complex.
Oh, the official form? Thank you.
That's the one for Steve?
Yeah. Any of the rest are electronic.
No, sir.
So, was anyone in the project this morning? But your band, that's a... You don't have to wait for my... And two of us were from last minute. You know.
Yeah.
And reorganization will have to wait for next.
That's right.
Not necessarily. We've got a quorum.
And we're postponing the minutes.
So Dave DeRocher is the tree warden now?
He has been for a few years.
Has he? Because that used to be an elected?
That's right, and, oh, but you just, probably been about five years.
Really? Probably makes more sense.
We have a, we don't have a locust on the sign, do we? It just says right here. Plan to include a locust sign? Anything?
Yes, sir. Is there a plan showing what's sitting on the property?
Was.
This is above it, please. That clock thing?
No. No locusts. Uh, yeah, I guess we could consider this a locust.
With this here?
Well, it's showing Kendall Street, it's showing Chickadee Street. It's this, uh... It's this lot.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the locust that you had planned, yep.
This is the locust, so this, the locust has to show nearby streets and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Whatnot?
General area.
Um, we don't have, we have enough copies for everybody, we didn't have enough. Like I said, otherwise we're not going to see it again until...
There's five copies.
Well, it's got to come with the...
Six or seven copies.
Let's see if it's on there.
A locust.
Okay.
Yeah, there's the number. It's now...
It's childproof.
Houses, it won't stick.
It's all right.
Just push it through.
Just need to dig my way, is that interesting?
There are multiple copies of each page in here.
So do you want to put a set for you, and...
No. I don't want a set.
How about the butters description form? That's a really good one. This is the site plan, is this in that package? It's on there.
Not the whole thing, but part, just the, the, uh, that's basically what you call a locust right there.
No. That's not what I was calling a locust.
No, but the piece is, that's the locust, but I'm saying, he doesn't have to show all of that.
Wait a minute.
You want the right one?
Something special figured in. It's on, it's on there.
Yeah, there's West State Street, top right.
That's the one that was in there.
Kathy gave us the wrong one?
Maybe.
This is not the correct...
Kathy may give us the wrong one. Okay, I've got six o'clock.
I'll make a motion to... Close the meeting to open the special perm, special permit.
Public hearing.
Public hearing for, uh... Granby DG Series LLC, and we will reconvene our meeting at the end of the public hearing.
Okay. 6:00 PM?
Wait, one second.
Okay, one second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. This is continued public hearing, 6:00 on June 4th. To consider the application of Granby DG Series LLC, 83 Orchard Hill Drive, Park Drive, Lemonster, Mass. 010453, for the site plan approval required under the following sections of the Granby zoning bylaws. Okay.
I'll put it up in the map and basically the full order here. Before I start, just to check with you, we have three quarters, which President, I understand is that just three out of the five are needed to look forward to the president?
That's correct.
Yep, okay.
Had you seen a tape of the previous meeting?
No, I have not.
But you will have to before you vote on the questions.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so we were here on March 25th and May 22nd. 25th was our introductory hearing. On 22nd, we had received our peer review of the revised plans, time line, with some of the comments and additional information they requested. They had then had a chance to quickly review it, but hadn't issued their, kind of their final letter, their follow-up to review, to review our comments. Since that date, we have received their, um, their final review of the project, addressing, saying that we addressed all the technical comments. They had a few conditions of approval that they had recommended, one being they provided a copy of the mass DOT approval, which we don't have a, an issue, is that they provide a copy of the SWIP, which again, no problem, they provide that to TPA anyways.
Which number is that one?
The SWIP is number five.
Yes, SWIP is number, DOT is number one.
Okay.
Have you seen what's there?
SWIP is number five. Number four, they recommended to the board consider as an additional, uh, potential condition of approval that we preview the truck movement with the fire department. We're okay with that condition, we haven't been able to achieve Mitchell regarding the movements, he indicated that it all looked good on his end, he's covered the plans for a lot of different fire drills and stuff when we submit our building permits.
So he doesn't issue anything after him, has he?
He won't issue anything, he built the building for us, he's got, we have alarm systems, things like that.
Well, we need that before we can make our decision.
Only on the truck traffic.
Yeah, that's two different things, we don't have anything to do with the interior of that building.
Yeah, but he will be very interested in the interior of the building, we have talked about the truck, we considered he's all separate.
Well, I think what you need to do is ask him for some sort of a letter to the planning board.
No, that's, we need to do that. He was supposed to issue us the letter once he, once he received plans, you know, to follow the process.
But Kathy only sent the plans to the building inspector and to the fire chief, she didn't send them, she didn't send them anywhere else, she was supposed to do that today. She was waiting for direction from us.
Okay, because usually they go out automatically to all the department heads.
Yeah, within 15 days, it just went up in the book.
But, um...
Something happened.
Yeah, there's one of these, so what you can do. Okay. Um, I have a question on, on number one, it says, um, is this the one we talked about, the board considered the technical condition of approval required for the mass DOT approval prior to construction?
Yep.
And we'll get that before we make our decision?
Uh, no, the DOT really won't issue that decision until after we receive town approval, so with the condition, we'll provide that to the town, you know, at some point for our ability to issue. We have been according with DOT, we, um, agreed with them on the driveway location, the access points, all, all of that stuff. The one thing we were going back and forth on DOT was, on was their request that we provide a sidewalk along the front edge of the building. As of last year, we hadn't kind of come to agree with them, but as of recently, we agreed to provide a sidewalk along the front edge of a connection to our building. Um, that was just per DOT request, typically that's something we're not always comfortable with, because it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere, but DOT, so, so we were better.
If DOT requires some other changes than what's shown on the plan here, do you want it to come back to you, or would you just accept DOT's redesign of the curb cut?
I want a set, so we have the latest plans.
And we're very, very confident there won't be any more changes, the one thing that we're waiting on that was just trying to work out the sidewalk, which...
Well, we would get it, we're going to get an ASBult when they're done, so if there are any changes, but we have no jurisdiction in the, in the DOT, so they, they could do whatever they want. It's a moot point for us, but if, if you want it to be on record...
I want it to be on record, the latest site plans we have are, include the DOT...
Yeah, that, that's...
So the condition would be that they submit revised site plans complying with DOT's permit?
If, if, if they're changing anything.
Right, if they change anything.
Sorry, I interrupted you, you were on the roll there.
No, 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 and I believe that was, that was it, with one condition suggesting that the board asked us to provide normal along this side of the basin for a sidewalk, she wanted me to do it in the future, but now we're providing because DOT requires, so it's kind of a moot point. We made some changes quite a lot last year for the board's comments, additions, one being to provide our writing trees along, on the board here, we kept the fence and just provided every writing trees on the, the outside. I know we weren't at the, the last year, so we did provide some additional stone mark outs, some minor versions to lay out and some additional information to time line. Um, at this point, I think we addressed everything from, from time line and from, from the board, but I'm happy to talk about anything, anything else, hoping to... Throwing over the board, it sounds like perhaps we can't have a vote tonight because we need to review that.
I still need to review the, the tape.
Is that the same thing? Number...
Three.
On the last page.
If that's a similar condition, just suggesting that we provide a copy of mass...
So you get all that at the same time?
That's interesting.
Was there something about the guardrails as well?
Um, yeah, they had suggested that we pull this guardrail back to allow for potential sidewalk, which we, we're adding sidewalks, we pulled that guardrail back. On this side, on this side, there was some, some discussion last hearing about the pulling the seven and four bay back away from the right away for this future sidewalk. It was, I think it was okay where it was, but it was easy enough for us just to slide it back if you'd be...
Well, I thought there was something about returns on the ends of the guardrails.
Um, yeah, yeah, we have returns here and here, and that was part of the original review.
What side of the sidewalk is the guardrail on?
It's on the back side of the sidewalk.
Okay. Would it make sense to reverse that to protect pedestrians, or is it typical, I have a...
Yeah, so typically the, um, the, the board is more providing a guardrail here, it's just to worry about the basin itself and part of it, and the basin, so it's not necessarily to protect pedestrians. I think it just needs more, more efficient, more efficient use of the guardrails, so it's a sort of a...
What do you think, do you, do you, what side of the sidewalk do you want the guardrail on?
Pavement side, most often personally.
Yeah, the wood protect the, protect the...
Well, I mean, you're, you're going with a wood guardrail, so I was, I'm assuming you're proposing possibly an eight by eight?
Yeah, typically eight by eight, plus then a four A property.
Right. So, if that's on the...
The thing I'm putting on this side, with the driveway side?
Now, what's that?
The sidewalk?
Should they go on, should they protect pedestrians? Or should we go on the other side of the sidewalk?
I don't believe I've ever seen them that way.
Not to mention they're going to be in the way for plowing.
If you put them on...
What, the sidewalk or the guardrail?
Both. You put that, you put the guardrail on the, the driveway side. You don't typically see that.
No.
You put it on, you put it on the opposite side.
On the inside?
No, on the, on the opposite side, the outside, the shoulder.
I'm missing it.
Yeah, typically, we put it on the outside of the sidewalk, it's, um, it's not really meant to be a pedestrian protection ward, it's just a protection for, for the stone mark reason, it's something our office requires, let's say it's not a, a time of fire, or...
I'm just seeing those posts as being a possible trip hazard with the concrete sidewalk right against it.
Sure, and we'll set, we'll set it back a couple feet from, from the edges, that'll still be the, the driveway. Sure, and we'll set, we'll set it back a couple of feet from, from the edges. That'll still be the, the driveway, a six-inch curb, a five-foot wide sidewalk, and then a foot or two to the face of the, the guardrail.
Oh, maybe I'm misunderstanding them. I thought you were gonna go driveway, guardrail, sidewalk, detention basin.
Nope, I mean, driveway, curb, the sidewalk, and then the guardrail between the sidewalk and the detention basin.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Was that what you just said?
Yeah.
Driveway, sidewalk?
Yep.
Guardrail.
Right, that's right.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I have a question on page six, number twenty-four of the zoning. Now, you had noted, um, one piece of that land is residential and you wanted to pay an R to move it into general business?
Um, no, so the property as a whole is, the front portion is in the, in the, the business district, but I think it's the first three hundred feet, and then the back portion is residential. Paying off losses to break off this piece from the overall parcel and convey this remaining five-point-five-heater piece back to the C and G machine shop.
So in other words, the business district only goes back five, say, five hundred feet. The property line goes back further than that.
Much, much further, but, um...
But if you, then you would change that zone then?
No. It could still be zoned the same. They're just chopping a piece of property out from Homer Jimgrass, C and G machine owner. Uh, not owner, but, uh, property owner, to create this new lot.
But supposedly, a piece of this is residential.
Correct. Due to the zoning bylaws, they say so many feet back from probably center line of road is general business, and then it becomes residential.
But the, the building and the parking areas are all in the general business district.
Correct.
So it doesn't extend over the zoning boundary?
See, when we rezone that, if you had a lot that was two thousand feet deep and ended up, up on Ferry Hill, it wouldn't, you, you had to draw the line somewhere. So I think it was like five hundred feet.
Is it, I think, is it three hundred feet deep?
It's either three or five. I thought three hundred, but...
Okay, well, three hundred feet stops there.
Yeah, I can show that on the...
So it conforms to the bylaw, because it's all within the general business district?
See the dotted line?
Yeah, it's this line back here.
Yeah.
That's the split between residential and general business.
And what piece do you want to?
The piece behind that.
So, so that line runs right, right along here. Under existing conditions, there's one lot here, which we think is a C and G machine shop. There's a second lot here, which is about nine to ten acres, which is a portion of the parcel. We're looking at, we want to divide this piece off right here for our development and convey this remaining portion back to the C and G machine shop. So we don't want the woods or anything back there. We need to get that back to the permanent. We're just taking this, this piece of that parcel right there.
We're still not touching more than half the property.
Yeah, no, but we're, we're, our development is right around here in the residential district here and just leaving.
And where's the dotted line on that particular one?
It's right around, right around here.
So everything that you are building on, on your driveway or parking lot and everything, is still in general business?
Correct, yeah.
And you're just picking up a piece? I'm not following why you need...
Well, we need this piece back here. Yeah, so we, we took this piece just in case we needed for certain dwell radius requirements and things like that. Sometimes we need to provide control of that.
Or right now, you're not building anything on it?
No, not these are being built in there. Just to be useful in development.
Okay, so you're just trying to make that part of the same property, so to speak?
Exactly, yes.
Just a little bit back up to, we originally were gonna buy the whole thing. When we did our office survey, the driveway for the machine shop is actually crosses the property line, so they had no way to get their truck turned in out. So that's why we, we had to go back and, and that's why it's a little bit kind of jagged there, just to trump it there, visiting business.
Okay, so it's not, it's not, I was concerned that it might be changing a zoning line.
We can't do that.
Because that would have to come in quick to do that. Okay? The light has gone.
Matt, on your, um, zoning analysis table?
Yep.
You have, um, maximum improving surface coverage. See if I can find it here.
It's a percentage.
Eighteen point four percent.
Seventy percent is the maximum improved coverage.
Yep.
When you split the lot off, will the building parking areas on the new lot be under seventy percent?
Yeah, eighteen point four percent is for the new lot.
Is for the new lot, yeah. The other thing that came up was the light in the back of the parking lot.
Yep.
Uh, I noticed that he interviewed the photometric plan, and it shows that there's no light that's active on the parking lot. Wondering if you could do a motion sensor light back there so that it would only go on if there's a truck or, or car passing through there at the time? Or does that need to be, um, all the time?
So that, that would go off, right? The only ones that say overnight are the, are the flash lights.
Yeah, one more.
We could ask that question before, and if you put it on sensor, there's issues if there's kind of back there or anything where it could create more of an issue when it's coming on and off.
It needs to go off at, at, at the set time.
Yeah, they all go off. They all, all this, the parking lights will go off a half hour after close.
Okay.
The only building, the only lights that we made on are the security light that shoots down, right, right at the front door and in the bottom building.
Okay. There was a comment at the last meeting from an invader who questioned the hours of operation. And the comment was, I think they wanted to close up at nine P M., whereas the application is to ten P M. Do you have any particular issues with that or if you have any preferences?
I would, uh, we got the package store that's open until ten, even later on the weekends. Uh, Cumberland Farms is open twenty-four, I believe twenty-four hours. CVS, I'm not sure about the little store down here on East State Street, what their hours are.
Further, yeah. Subway, all the ones that we've permitted has had a ten o'clock closing. With, you know, for, with the exception, I like Cumberland or CVS, we request it longer, but typically it's ten o'clock. And, and that's the, that's the latest they're gonna stay open.
That's seven days a week?
Yes.
Now, now typically, if, if they don't have a, a need to stay open because they're, they're not generating any business, they're gonna close their doors a little sooner than earlier.
And that doesn't mean, again, as a general retail store, it's a ten, you know, this, we have different availability to stay up until ten. Doesn't mean that they're necessarily gonna stay up until ten every day, but, um, you know, it'd be...
Sorry, I could, could you?
I said that our request would give you eight, eight hours of operation, eight to ten. I said that doesn't mean necessarily that the tenant can stay open until ten, if they have the ability to do that. Could be seven days a week, could...
So we'll have to take that into consideration and do the final...
Conditions. Yep.
And then the four parking spaces sort of in the back. So they're providing thirty-eight spaces, which is the minimum required by the zoning bylaw. Those four spaces were somewhat of an issue with the neighbors behind there. Do you want to allow him to, uh, put in, uh, to not build those spaces unless needed?
I thought we discussed at the last meeting that we were gonna require those four spaces, if I'm not mistaken.
More, more than likely, they'll be used by employees.
I was just thinking they could be sort of reserved spaces and build if necessary, but if you want to put them in now, then...
It conforms to the bylaw. I don't wanna see it, I personally don't wanna see a situation like that has occurred on a Cumberland Farms with lack of parking.
For the, for the harsh truck, you're saying, or?
No, just the, uh, populace in general. And there, and Cumberland Farms is the only ones in that area. There are no other storefronts that are operating in solitary business.
There aren't thirty-eight spaces there. Does that mean for the bylaw change?
I don't know.
It's based on, uh, square footage type of use, so I don't know what, what formula they used twenty years ago, whenever it was, but... Any other questions?
Um, I, I don't think we need to vote tonight. I think we need to wait in this, and we don't have anything from the, uh, other departments.
I don't think we can vote tonight.
We need a full board?
I can't vote because I haven't, I haven't reviewed the, the previous meeting.
We need a full board.
I would, I would propose that we keep this public hearing open and not close it in case either of the other board members have questions, or you have a question after reviewing the previous meeting that you weren't in attendance for.
So continue if you're okay.
Yes, correct. Do you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
We're kind of Armstrong here.
Yeah, it's a choice. Um, just if there's anything the board needs from us, in the meantime, just if you remember, let us know if you had to check the time.
If you get... I, I, well, the DOT, we're not gonna get anything. Who's gonna contact the fire department? The fire chief, I should say.
Well, Kathy, for to get the letter to us, Kathy can remind him of that, because he's already had the plans and, and she'll make sure they get copies of the latest plans.
See, the unfortunate thing is, is none of these other committees, boards in town are responding to us in kind. You know, with a letter, whether it be conservation, board of health, uh, well, highway wouldn't be involved on this.
That's, they don't have to. I mean, it's, it's our obligation to send it to them. If they don't respond, that's, that's, that's on, on them.
However, that seems to be a holdup in some cases.
It shouldn't be, because they've got fifteen days to, or whatever the time is, to respond. They don't respond, then they don't get any of their, their needs met. We have a peer review and engineers that, that look at it from a bunch of different...
From a planning point of view.
Yeah, for the most part, to, to meet code.
But if some of them aren't getting it till today or tomorrow...
That's not their fault.
No, it's not their fault, but they still have thirty days to respond.
No, they don't get thirty days after that. We'll, we'll talk to the fire department. They're the only ones holding us up right now, right? The only ones that haven't responded?
None, no. It, it just went today or tomorrow. I don't know if Kathy had time today or not. Kathy was waiting to hear from us as to what to do. She doesn't have time, like she did in the past, to do everything we wanted her to do, and automatically did.
You folks, you've been through conservation?
Uh, there's no weather on the site, so we don't need to go through, through conservation or anything within the vicinity of the site. Um, the board of health, we've, not with board of health, Mr. Bomberdier, very, very helpful. We've been on site, so all testing, so he's comfortable with everything, everything out there. Um, the fire chief, he did speak to Chief, Chief Mitchell, just to get his sense. He said he was comfortable with everything. He's gonna review the current plans when they come through. We're happy to work with the departments. I know the bylaw does say that it was thirty days after submission that they have to review, but again, we try to reach out to the people as we can to make sure everybody's comfortable.
Maybe it makes sense for Matt to contact the fire chief, see, request a formal comment letter?
I spoke to him twice and I sent him the plans. Um, I didn't ask him for an email, a letter on him. He was sure he'd want to.
Well, he, we should be contacting the fire chief.
Right, okay.
I will call him tomorrow.
Okay.
And, um, like I said, Kathy, I talked to Kathy this afternoon, and she's just sending them off to the other departments. So technically, they have thirty days to respond. They probably won't need it, but...
I'll call Kathy too.
And then we did talk about that question at the end of last year, with point number twenty-three and the timeline of, we had to clarify patient at the end of that. And I've, I've over-called the exact conversation of how many days they had in response. It was our understanding that they had received the plans, and I believe they're concrete.
Correct. And Kathy would be the one to send them to them, but she didn't send them to all of them because she was waiting for direction from us. Which is different from what we, we normally, we, she normally gets there that, uh, it's not our secretary, so we're infringing upon her time.
And that's fine, but we need to know that ahead of time.
I know, and I didn't ask Kathy until today.
When are we meeting next?
Our next regularly scheduled meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Next would normally be Monday coming up, but that's the annual time.
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we continue this hearing till the twenty-fourth?
I'll make such a motion.
That's fine. We should have answers back from department heads.
And I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just, just to back that, just, just to back that up.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Six o'clock, June twenty-fourth.
Aye.
Six P M. Here.
Correct.
I guess, um, we'd get a warrant, but we need to deliver the, the, the gates for tonight's hearing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them to make sure that they, they do that. Actually, only one of, was Rob here for the, the previous one, so he's out anyway, so it's just, it's just Glenn.
Yeah.
And myself. So there's no reason why we shouldn't be prepared on the twenty-fourth to vote.
I'll take yours.
Okay, thank you.
New York?
Yeah.
It's a good sign we need to... So we just have to...
Reconvene and...
The law gets back there.
Have a good night.
Just as you put the lights on, it's getting dark.
We're gonna probably be shutting them off within a couple of minutes.
Ooh, it's good, huh?
Are we done?
So we just have to...
Reconvene, a regular meeting?
We're waiting for you.
I'll make a motion to reconvene. Second?
Second, I'll go ahead and go to your, your floor. To close and then, so I'll just say the, 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 the couple of teams close at six P M. The only other thing we have left over to on, on the bottom of the agenda, and then we'll address something else. The only other thing we have left over to, on the bottom, I forget, um, the most important thing is...
Yeah, we're just gonna continue that until we have a, a full board.
So, basically, the same agenda for next time.
Right.
Okay, we'll go over the action items then, the next one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Whoops, I'm sorry.
Did you notice what tag on the minutes? Did you want to take that?
We weren't gonna go over the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't have a form to...
Okay, I just want you to know what the tag was so you can correct it. Tap page two.
Yes. It should be in your email. That's where I got it from.
Page three.
So, the second paragraph, which begins Matthew Bonbachi. Second line, at the end, Mr. Bonbachi.
My can of...
As your follow-up. So, that was it.
Okay.
That was it?
We have a motion to adjourn?
It's on the table.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.